This conference will now be recorded.
Welcome, everyone, to Clatsop County's work session. It's December 1st, 2020. And work sessions are an opportunity for board members to discuss issues informally with staff and invited guests. The Board encourages members of the public to attend work sessions and to listen to the discussion, but there's generally no opportunity for public comment. Members of the public wishing to address the Board are welcome to do so during the Board's regularly scheduled meetings held twice monthly. So let's start today with just kind of checking in with the other commissioners. Who would like to start and to say hello? Commissioner Thompson, I see that your mic is on. Why don't you go ahead?
That's because I can't see the screen. And there seems to be an echo.
Is there an echo with everything? Is it me?
I don't think so. I don't know what to say. When I was talking before, there was an echo, so now there isn't. So I'm glad to be here that we are rounding out this strategic planning session and we can we can carry on. It's inspiring. It's great to have a focus and a way to hold ourselves accountable and to empower ourselves to do good. So thanks to everybody for all the good work.
Very good. Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. Commissioner Nebiker, would you like to go next?
Sure. Thanks. Hello, everyone. Well, I too am glad that we've been able to get so much work done. And I know that's mostly because of the staff and our consultants, and they've done excellent work. I'm grateful for that. I am very sorry to see so many new cases of COVID. So worrisome. And I hope that our county can, the people in our county can manage to be more careful and safe.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Nebiker. Commissioner Quila, would you like to go next?
Yes, so I would agree. I mean, COVID really dominates everything around the hospital. Obviously, we had nine, I think, tested positive within our urgent cares and clinics yesterday. We've had, we have one COVID patient admitted right now. We've had as many as three at one time. So this has been, you know, it's a stressful time. So other than trying to treat patients, we're focusing on what we can do to support the caregivers here and the providers that work here. And so that's, a lot of our efforts are going to be focused on resiliency and support for them. We are doing a community food drive and distribution out at the fairgrounds. So that will be on December 14th through the 18th, through the week of December 14th through 18th. We'll be giving food boxes out to families that need it here in Clatsop County. And last year, we did about, I think, almost 300 food boxes. We hope to do about the same amount. Probably the need is more this year, so we probably will do more. But it is an opportunity for us to show our appreciation to the community and support each other. That's all I got.
Thank you, Commissioner Quila. Commissioner Webb, would you like to go next?
Yeah, I hope everybody had as nice a Thanksgiving as I did. I was blessed to be on a seven-state Zoom call with my extended family, and it was, it was pretty wonderful to, I haven't seen, one of my grandchildren I haven't seen in almost a year. And so it's, it was, it was quite a lovely event. And I don't know how the weather is where you all are, but I woke up this morning not in such fog that I couldn't see the house next door to me. And now the sun is shining and it's bright and beautiful. So I'm ready to rock and roll.
Thank you, Commissioner Webb. This is Commissioner Sullivan, and I just wanted to thank Terry for all the work that they, you and your staff and our staff did put this together. And I also wanted to speak from my new job. I am continually impressed by the individuals that staff the Astoria Warming Center and keep such a vulnerable population safe on these cold winter evenings. And I appreciate their input. And that extends to the other organizations in town, like Feeding Empty Bellies and the Beacon Clubhouse that works with the vulnerable population also. So we have a great community here, and I'm very proud of them and proud of our community. You know, the work that Commissioner Quila is doing, and it's on so many levels all across everywhere. I think we really are stepping up for this, these difficult times that we're in. So just got to take care of ourselves and continue to do what we can to flatten the curve and wear our mask and the sacrifices that we are putting forth now is going to make a difference. And we will, the end is in sight. It's just, as a meeting that I was just on, there's a light at the end of the tunnel. The tunnel is just kind of long, but we'll get there. So, and I'm going to turn this over to our county manager, Don Boone. Will you and, will you and Dr. Morby, Terry Morby, facilitating this meeting?
Yes, I'm going to, first, good afternoon, commissioners. I just want to also thank each of you for doing the video and participating in the video. I thought it was a great, great product, and I appreciate you spending time sharing your thoughts about the holidays and for personal safety as we're in the pandemic. So thank you. So yeah, Terry, Terry, this is really going to be the Terry Moore Show. But I would like to just, you know, state that getting here during COVID was quite a journey. Everything has been quite a journey because of COVID. So I want to thank Terry for being flexible and for doing such a really good job for us. So I'll just hand it over to Terry, and he'll take it from here.
Okay, well, thank you, Don. Thank you, commissioners. Good to see you again. And we are at a, at a place where I was relatively certain in theory that we would get to, but occasionally had some empirical doubts about getting here. But from my perspective, you know, independent of the specific actions, which is, is your biggest concern, but because it is, it is less my concern. My concern is, have we, do we have, do we have a document? Have we been clear about how we made those decisions? Did we make it on the evidence? Did we document, et cetera? And on those scores, the procedural scores, I'm, I'm very happy with what we have done collectively. That said, it can always be done better, and that's where we are today, which is, we've moved step by step. You've seen how the pieces have come together, and it has come together into the plan that I talked about. So now, today, we're going to go through that. This is a, today is a relatively simple agenda because it's got just two parts to it. We're going to look at the plan that we've got and listen to your comments. And our, where I think we are headed is to get your approval with any amendments. And by that, it doesn't mean formal approval, which won't happen until January, but enough approval that we can take the next step of making this a final document and putting together the other pieces that have not been put together yet, which, as I'll get to in a minute, is, you know, can create some problems, but I'll tell you what they are and how we're resolving them. And then we'll have the majority of the time to talk about that, and then we can move on to the final process. The, we could get, it, what I would, wanted to avoid was to have every commissioner going page by page, line by line, through edits that are, that would be necessary. We're going to have to get there eventually. I thought maybe I'd get some beforehand. I don't have any yet. But what I really want to make sure that we get to is structurally, as we look through it, you know, if we can get some of the language polished up, is this the plan that you want or not? And if we get to that point, then we're, then we're in good shape. So I'm going to take just a few minutes to introduce this item one. And by a few, I mean, not my normal 20 minutes, but 10 or less. And then turn it over to the commissioners to make comments however they choose. So let's start with what we said we were going to do. And this is from, more or less, a version of this went to you last February. We've made amendments since then, but since last August, this is more or less the plan that we have been aimed at. 20 to 30 pages with supporting appendices and a separate high-quality two-to-four-page summary. So what we have today is this plan. And it is at the level, it's 100% done, except that you haven't reviewed it and made the changes that you want. But there's nothing missing from it at this point. The, and here's how that, here's how that outline in February got translated, not exactly word for word, but pretty darn close, into the Table of Contents of the Plan. And so here we are at the, you know, we've got about five or about eight pages of introduction, a lot of blank space there. But we're at the 20-to-30-page plan that we talked about in the format, you know, with the content that we said we would have. The appendices, I want to just flag those for you. Those are described in Chapter 5. And Don and Teresa and I have worked on that. Those appendices will be on our website, and Chapter 5 will have hot links in it so that when the Chapter 5 document goes out, or the plan goes out in whatever form it is, people can click on it, and they will be sent to the webpage where they can read these appendices. And we've talked about those before also. I want to describe something that I didn't describe. This is the only new slide that I'm giving you, and this comes from my thinking about how this part often gets messy at this point. And the reason it gets messy is because the policymakers are looking at a document that is in the middle of the range that we're talking about and looking at it and saying, well, it's too technical. And so I want to show you how all the pieces come together so that we, when you're then making your comments, you're making them in the context of what we intend to do, which doesn't include everything that we've given you so far. So we've got different audiences, different purposes, text and formatting. The first audience is really, you know, maybe a dozen or two dozen people. It's all the information that we've ever written or, and recorded or, and stored. That will be somewhere. The county will have it. And it will be able to, the staff will be able to get access to it. And anybody that wants it, if they ask for it, could be given that, but there won't be direct links to it. So call, and so that's the most detailed level. Then we've got these technical appendices, what I just talked about. There will be direct links for that. They will be in the plan. People can get to that, but it's a subset of everything. And it's what Don and I have decided is the most useful subset for documentation. A lot of detail, but not overwhelming detail, redundancies omitted, et cetera. Then there's the plan, and that's the document that we're reviewing today that we're calling the plan, this 20-to-30-page document. That, all that you have seen. What you have not seen is this, the summary in the plan itself. That's page seven of the plan I sent you. That's not written. And I didn't write that because it's just, it's just a little bit inefficient to write that when we're still talking about what the content of the plan is going to be. The downside of that, which I recognize, is that by saving that time, you don't have that summary, and as a result, the plan looks a little bit overwhelming because there's no summary for it. That, that is a known problem. It's going to be remedied with the summary. And I, and that'll be two or three pages that will make it a readable summary, focused not on process, but focused on vision, mission, values, and focus areas and actions to be written. The other piece is the thing that I showed you on the previous slide, which is the summary document and website. So this is independent of the plan document. It, it could be, you, you don't have to have this document, but I'm going to show you an example of why they're helpful. It's shorter, it's got more graphics, the focus on vision, mission, values. That also is to be written. In other, in other plans, the way I have done that is made that in an 11-by-17 format, folded that over so it's a four-page booklet of 11 by, of eight and a half by 11. And you've got, you know, kind of the, the plan, the vision, mission, values on the front, the actions on the pages in the middle, and how to follow up with other information on the back. It's a really nice way to get a readable piece out to people so they go, okay, this is what they're up to, without all the detail. If they want that detail, then here it is. They go back to the summary in the plan. Well, they go back to the plan, they go back to the technical appendices. And finally, the last piece, which is farther down the line, is future materials for focus area actions. As you work on these focus areas, you're going to be cross-referencing the plan itself, and you're going to be creating more material that expand, that clarifies what the plan says. So the plan is, as you, as you well understand, it's, it's general. It's got issues, focus areas, it's got some actions, but how, the work plan for those actions, how the actions are going to be delivered, all that is to be determined in this first year of working on the plan. So you think about that, everything up here is longer, more technical, has less formatting, is more detailed, and is frankly harder to read. And as you move down this way, it gets shorter, less technical, more formatting, simpler and easier. And so far, we're right here, and you haven't seen anything easy yet. So, you know, I just want to let you know that we understand that, and that is, that is a next step. When we get there, there's, there will be a question, and I want to show you just as an example of a plan that I worked on that I think does a good job of this. This is Issaquah. And you go to their webpage, and you click on Strategic Plan, and you get to this page. And it allows you to click on Vision, Mission, Values, Guiding Principles, Goals, or get the full PDF. When you click on, let's say you click on Goals, and you get this. Here are our goals: mobility, growth, development, environmental stewardship. That should look, Leadership and Services, that should look kind of familiar to you folks, you know? Different, slightly different words, but a lot of the same stuff. So you say, okay, well, let's, what are they saying about infrastructure? You click on Infrastructure, and you get a page that says, well, here's the opportunity, here's the background, here's objective number one. So if you think about it, here's your focus area, here's your, you know, here's your action number one. Here are the subsets of how you would do that action. And that's, that is both, in Issaquah, I think it's 100% on the web. This could also be, you know, another, another document if you wanted it, but I think a website is the way to go. Don and I have, have talked about this as a possibility, how it gets worked out, you know, who does it? You know, where the money comes from, you know, those are all questions. And this, I think, is, to me, this is the most elegant version of the whole thing, but it can be a little bit expensive. So going back to what I was talking about before, I think we're, we have to have the summary in the plan. We're going to have that for sure. Whether we have a special summary document or not, we don't have to have that. We have to have a website. And how good that website looks is a question of, you know, desire and budget. So I think, I think we're on the right track to get to, you know, something like that. So that, that's everything that I've got. And now I'm bringing this back up for your discussion, Commission Discussion of the Plan. Here's a table of contents, just so, you know, as you're talking about what you're talking about, you might reference at least what chapter you're in, so we know what's going on. With that, I'm going to be shifting mainly to taking notes so I can do what I did last, in our last discussion, which is try to summarize at the end where the agreements are, what needs to be done, and how we're going to move forward. So with that, I'll turn it back over to you. And Chair Sullivan, do you want to, do you want to keep track of the commissioners' hands and, and calling on people while I'm doing the writing? Or would you prefer that, say, Teresa or Don do that?
I can certainly try doing that. The squares are kind of small, but I can, I can do my best. I think we can all help each other.
Okay, then, Commissioner, I'm going to, I'm going to turn it over to you. I'm available for questions, but otherwise, I'm here taking notes.
Okay, thank you so much, Terry. Who would like to start the discussion today? Well, I'll start out with, I don't see any hands right now, so I will start out with the comments that I, I really appreciate your initial explanation because as a former seventh-grade school teacher, and I, and I taught for a number of years. So my, my reference points tends to be that. And, and I know that with, I think newspapers aim for like an eighth-grade education level of reading. And this was a technical, and and so I, I think we, I look forward to going towards a summary where it's just a little more, I think, a shorter version of what, all that you're trying to say. I don't know if I'm, I'm not even saying that properly, but you know what I'm talking about. This, this was a challenging document. Go ahead.
I do, Commissioner. And one thing I, I forgot that I was going to say, I want to make a case now, is this plan document, as I say, it's got, it's got maybe 25 to maybe 50 serious readers. And they are, they're the stakeholders that you know. They're people that are, there are other government agencies, just a couple people in those agencies, there are some of your service providers, your nonprofits, there are the watchdog groups. They're those people that want to know. The document, you know, it has to explain, what I worry about is making sure that we have done legal requirements and we have documented our decisions in a way that protects you from, I think, inappropriate allegations, well, like, well, it's all just political and they just made it up. It is, I mean, you that have been through the process know that this is not just political, that a lot of thought has gone into it, that trade, that data has been reviewed, trade-offs have been made, there's been back and forth. That needs to be documented so that when those challenges come up, you can say to anybody kindly, have you read the plan? Here, if you look at page six of the plan, you will see that what you were saying doesn't seem to square with what we did. That's the document that this plan is. It is not, it is not seventh or eighth grade because this is not a seventh or eighth grade issue. And I mean, attorneys would probably want to believe that that's true. So, you know, we do have to pay attention to that. So it, I, it's a, it's more, anyway, point taken.
No, I think.
Definitely believe we need the shorter document. And this one can be, this one can be edited as well.
That's a good point, Terry, and I, and I think that you've done a very thorough job. And it's, reading through this, it reminded me of all the work that we did put into this. And I, and I think it's very faithfully covered, the work that was done and the process that was done. And so that, it has achieved its goal. I, I, I just, I'm just saying that I'm glad that, you know, that, that we will have a form that is slightly more accessible. Someone says, you know, what is the strategic plan of the county? Okay, here it is. Boom, boom, boom. And this is where we're going to go. So that was my comment. Thank you very much, Terry. So Commissioner Thompson?
Well, thank you for that stimulating introduction because when I look at this, yes, it's grounded in a thoughtful, valid process. Now it's at a certain point of development. We're looking at, at celebrating our success in doing that today. Oh, goody, now we get the challenge of going forward to implementation and not the same group of people implementing it that designed it. Well, that's a dandy reality check. And how do we embrace reality? How do we embrace the messy process of coming to common understandings when we have different points of view? So for me, this is like the blueprint for a garden. And now this summary is going to be the seeds that we scatter and look at how we grow them. Because some people are going to be interested in one part of the garden, and some people are going to be interested in the other part of the garden. And we can anticipate that there will be elk tromping through, looking to munch on things. I mean, I'm using these, these pictures and metaphors because these words are going to have to be translated into realities that engage our community if we're going to be successful at this. This is a great start. Now we're at a, we're at a breakthrough level to take it out and to hand it over to the next commissioners. So that's what I, for me, that's the, the challenge of it all, is, you know, Mark, I'm looking at you because you've often been at a different point of view. I'm thinking of the Arch Cape Forest, for example. And so for some of us, that was a really good thing to do, and you were always clear. No, you didn't think that was a good thing to do, but we as a group went forward with it. Okay, how do we still allow each other's points of view and still make a good garden together? And that's what I think a good strategic plan does, is it, is it works out kind of competing realities into a common, good product. That's pretty, that's pretty general and pretty metaphorical, but that's how I conceive of it right now.
I think that's a good metaphor, Commissioner Thompson. Thank you. And let's, let's bring this back to the packet of seeds that we have right now, the, the ground that's upturned. Do we have any, if we were, Terry, I think this is kind of what you were hoping that we might do, is if we go down the list of this document, right now we have the introduction, which includes why local governments create strategic plans, why Clatsop County created this strategic plan now, how the county created and will use a strategic plan, and how to read this strategic, strategic plan. Does, do any of the commissioners have comments about this particular section, these, these sections here? Commissioner Webb?
Um, I, I felt that, thank you, Terry, first, for, for an explanation of the documents that we were given. I don't, I'm not sure that we, I did not understand what this was going to look like. So, so this is, has been very helpful. My general comment about this section is that I thought there was a lot of really good, insightful information in it. I think it was loaded with, how do you, you know, how do you educate people in a way that they can tolerate? And, and the thoughts in here, I think, are very, very good. I just think it's too long. I just think that it's, that people aren't, you know, that, that 50 to 75 people who might actually read it, I'm not sure they get all the way through it. And yet, there, there are some very good messages about, about how the process of county government working and working effectively. And I, so I think there were a lot of very, very good, very, very good, good ideas. I just think it was too long. I just think that it could have been, it sounded very preachy to me. And as I say, because there are.
Is that because you're part of the choir? Commissioner Webb, then it's not preachy because we're all part of the choir for, for government?
I'm sorry, I didn't.
Never mind. I'll withdraw my comment.
Um, so, so as I say, I guess that's my overwhelming recommendation, is that it's just too long. But it's worth, but the ideas in it are very worthwhile because you talk about some very basic things. about some very basic things that citizens don't often think about. Um, and I, I like the fact that you described the process so well. But once again, um, it's, it's been a year-long process, and I think it could be explained a little bit more succinctly. Um, my other comment is that I'm really pleased to hear, um, that, that you're putting together so strongly what you described as something that could be on the website, because I think that's incredibly useful. And I think that something that could be turned into a four-color brochure is very, very useful. Uh, and, um, so I really, you know, I, I really value that, that recommendation. Um, I think that all my comrades know that I don't have a lot of respect for the county's website, but, um, but, you know, certainly something like this could be on the website, and I hope we could muster some, some money for, for some copies as well. So I think that's it for me.
Thank you, Commissioner Webb.
For now. I'll be back. I'll be back.
Okay. You know, we'll, we'll, we'll call on you. Terry?
Yeah, John, make this quick. Um, you know, that's, Commissioner Webb, I understand your point of view, and let me just proceed as if every other commissioner shared that point of view, which they may not, but they may. And so, I, I, there are really maybe three solutions, one of which I can probably get rid of pretty easily. One is to turn a lot of this stuff that you call good information into footnotes. That's just gonna make a messy document, so we're probably not gonna do that. The other possibility is to move a lot of it out and to create a new appendix. Um, the disadvantage of that is that if, what you have to think about is whether you really want people to understand this process as part of the plan, or have the ability to understand it. If you put it into appendix, then it's pretty likely that most people won't get to it, because it's, that's just one more hurdle. But that's, that's a possibility. The other one that I've used before is to start each chapter of the plan with a, with a font that is a little bit smaller, set off, a little more centered, that is an abstract of what are the most important points of this chapter. And so, what, and it's, it's only half a page long at most. And what it allows somebody to do is open the plan and say, okay, I can now tell people that I read the plan, but if I wanna cheat, I can. I'll just read the abstract, and, you know, and then when I'm in a meeting, if somebody asks me about it, I'll pull out the rest of the plan and read the rest. So there is that possibility as well, that, um, and, you know, there are probably others, but we will, I think today, we will need to decide which of those or what other solution there is. And, and the, the other is just really thorough editing, um, you know, uh, that cuts this down from, from two pages to four pages without losing what you care about, and, which is also a possibility.
Lost. I lost my thing. I, I will, I will pose those questions to all the commissioners in just a second, but I wanted to make a comment about, um, about COVID-19. Um, you know, there's a, there's a footnote in there, there is, there is talk about COVID in here, and I just think that's important. We are going through an historic period of time here, and, um, and I think that that is part of this, this, it has been part of this process in that it's the background, but it's also what we're all laboring through. I know it's not part of the strategic plan, but it's part of the historical context of this plan being developed. And I, um, so I appreciate it being mentioned. I, I think it's important to keep that in there. Um, so what you were saying is, we could do some thorough editing, number one, and reduce it that way, but keep everything in front of us on that page. Two, to have an abstract where you kinda do a half-page summary before you get into the verbiage. And then the other one is more footnotes, and the other one is a separate document in the appendix, appendices, if I'm saying that right. Um, is that, is that, is that what you're asking us right now? You're, you're muted, Terry.
Um, you don't have to answer that right this minute, because that same thing will probably come up again in chapter two, three, and four. And at that point, having, having dealt with it through all those chapters, you might have a better idea about which, which way you wanna handle it. But by the, by the end of the day, you know, at the end of the hour, it would be nice to make that decision, yes.
Okay, so it's about 20 to 1 right now, so we'd be, we'll be thinking about that. Commissioner Thompson, you had your hand up. Did you wanna add some comments about the introduction part?
Yeah, I, just to clarify, thank you. Um, I thought, Terry, what you were suggesting was, in a sense, um, an executive summary that would just go on top, that would address Commissioner Webb's concerns. Did I misinterpret something?
No, um, it's, I'm saying, the, the executive summary is, unless I hear differently, I'm 100% that we're gonna have an executive summary that I haven't written yet. Um, I'm 100% that there's gonna be stuff on the website. I'm, uh, I'm certain about whether we have this kinda glossy document, you know, which I think is handy, this, you know, this 11 by 17 booklet that you hand out whenever you wanna go anywhere and say, well, do you know our strategic plan? Okay, here it is. It's just a real convenient thing to have, but that takes a little bit more effort. Um, so that's all gonna happen at some level. Now the question is, in addition to that, even with all that, as summary, is this plan just too long? And if it's too long, then what choices do we have? And that's, that's what I was talking about. If it's too long, it's, it's what we said it was gonna be. It's 22 pages, we aim for 20 to 30. Uh, so, but it's, if it's too long, then we gotta cut stuff out. And we gotta either throw that stuff out or put it someplace else. So that means either it goes into an appendix or not, and, or we don't cut it, we don't cut it out, we just add a summary, we add better summaries at the top of each chapter. And those some, that's the idea.
Sorry, it's just that small print is off-putting to a lot of people like me who have visual things. So, um, I like the material as it is. I'd like an executive summary on top to make it easy, so that people have a context when they start. Tell them what you're gonna tell them, tell them, and then they can go more and see what you have told them, the three, threefold part. So that's my comment. Thank you.
On that-
Thank you, Commissioner.
On, on that, Commissioner, let me, um, right now, this document is in Word. Uh, at one point, we thought we might put it into something else, uh, you know, a layout package, but I think Don and Teresa and I have decided that we won't do that. But there still are things we could do in Word. So I said small print, it doesn't have to be small print. Imagine that there's a page and there's this little sidebar that is a box that's in a different font, that is not smaller, and it's visually attractive, and you kinda go, okay, I get it. I get each chapter, I get a little summary in a sidebar, now I flip, and, you know. So those things are manageable in Word. It's the full layout with all the pictures and everything else. And, and some pictures are possible, but if you've ever tried to do two-column work in Word with a lot of graphics inside, it gets pretty messy.
Okay, thank you, Terry. I appreciate that. Any other comments about introduction? If, if not, we will go into the Foundation for Action. Okay, the Foundation for Action is vision for the county government, mission for the county government, and values for the county government. Does anybody have any comments dur, about this section? It starts on page 19, I believe. Yes. And then the, 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 the listing is, is on page 20. It looks good to me, but- Commissioner Thompson?
Thank you, Chair Sullivan. The only thing I didn't see that on deeper reflection, I think, is missing is that capacity to, um, to listen to each other's different points of view in a way that welcomes them. And I don't, when I looked for that particular trait, I don't know that I saw it in a value, but, but as I think about how we work together and how we might, um, you know, really improve the way we work together as individuals and as county government, that occurred to me. I don't know if it's too late to put it in the process. I don't know if other people agree with me. But how do we help each other expand our comfort zones to, to really welcome divergent points of view and work together collaboratively? Cause, cause I see collaboration, I see engagement, but sometimes differences get glossed over cause it's really more fun sometimes just to listen to people who already agree with us than to listen to people who have a different point of view.
And I agree with you, Commissioner Thompson. I think those are important values, but I, I, for me personally, I think it's covered under engagement and collaboration. Um, because I, I don't, I don't think you have, you know, collaboration without those, those things that you're talking about. It's, it is important. Commissioner Nebiker?
Yeah, thank you. Um, so, in the packet, on page 16, under, uh, why Clatsack County created this strategic plan now, the second paragraph, I think it doesn't exactly speak to what Commissioner Thompson is saying, but I think it's inherent in this paragraph. Cause it talks about-
Is that the one that says, yeah, which, which, what, what, could you read the beginning sentence of that?
Yet many local governments conclude that the likely benefits of a strategic plan outweigh the cost of developing it. And it talks about, um, relationships, perspectives, capacities, um, etc., that will make local government work better.
How do you feel about that, Commissioner Thompson?
I mute myself, so there's not an echo. Um, it, none of it specifically says, how do we deal with when it goes wrong? Cause I'm always looking at, okay, if we all, if we all get along and we all agree, it's sweet, it's good. Where things get hinky sometimes is where we really don't see the truth of what another is saying, cause it's uncomfortable. And that's where I think, um, we don't do as well. Cause it's uncomfortable. We don't like to be uncomfortable. It feels dangerous, it feels, um, risky in ways that we wanna avoid sometimes. And, and yet, our convening role, our collaboration role, I think, is only effective to the extent that we can engage with differences. And our level of government is where we can do that. Man, they don't do it at the state level, they don't do it at the federal level, but at the county level, if, thank you for nodding, Commissioner Webb, you know, it's hard. It's hard work to listen to somebody else who believes something very strongly that we think is just wrong. And how not to make somebody else bad for being different. That's, that's the flavor.
I, I agree with you, Commissioner Thompson. I, I think that, uh, for me, the, the, the strategies that we have under the governance thing, where we include, uh, training and there's a lot of, um, there's a lot of emphasis on, on, on how to, uh, really have stellar kind of governance here in the county. I think some of that would come underneath that. And, and I see, uh, County Manager Boone may wanna say something to say, and I, and I will hand that over to him in just a second. Um, I guess the question is, under vision, mission, and values, is that the place to detail how to take care of conflict? So, County Manager, Boone?
Um, if I could, just real quickly, I think that, um, this is a, a topic that we've all discussed as a board, and I think it's certainly part of all of our legacy, is to create, um, a sensitivity to the diversity of thought that just exists within any community. And then how we respectfully incorporate that into public policy, and just in the services that we provide. I think that there's just a little tweaking, that maybe you would give us a little latitude, uh, under the engagement and the collaboration piece, um, so that we can draw that out just a little bit more. And then we can send it to you, and then you can wordsmith it further for, for, for us. But I think there is some, some short descriptors that can reinforce that, um, that thought. So, cause I think what it really comes down to is, is just recognizing that we serve everybody, which means we listen to everybody, that, that we see everybody. And in seeing and listening, um, that informs our policy and our services. So I just think that we can say that a little bit more descriptively. So, if that resonates with the board.
Yes, indeed. Thank you so much. Any, any, um, any other comments about, um, the Foundation for Action?
Director Mike Witnickel.
Oh, sorry. I can't take this right now, Mike. Um, just a minute, sorry. Okay.
So, just, uh, in, in support of what Don said, um, that's where I was headed to. And what I wanna point out to you is something that, it may sound small, but it's, it's absolutely critically important. Even though you could see, I, I think people were making the argument, which I could make too, but we've already covered that here. We've covered it in relatively dry language. And the way you're talking about it now, the way, the way that discussion goes, is much more, you know, about, no, this is really important. This listening, this dealing with differences is important, and we're gonna do it a different way. However that sentence gets crafted, that is a different plan than the plan without that in there. And it, how you act will be different, because you will have said, no, remember, that's what we said, and this is what we meant. So I, I, I'm with Don. I, I think we can get some language in there that will, you know, find a way to, to make that point just a little bit stronger and a little bit less sterile.
Excellent. Thank you. And thank you, Commissioner Thompson, for bringing that forward. So any other comments under Foundation for Action? Okay, let's go down to number three, situation assessment. Forces affecting the county's ability to deliver services, county performance on service delivery. And that is, um, starting on page 21. And, uh, forces affecting the county's ability to deliver services, um, positive issues, county performance on service delivery. Uh, any, any comments on those pages?
Commissioner, Chair Sullivan?
Yes.
Is this a place to put in something like pandemics, in terms of, of constraints? Forces affecting the county's ability to deliver services, catastrophic pandemic, or cata, other kinda catastrophic events? Cause, cause you know what, we're in that Cascadia abduction zone.
Right. And I know on page 22, it mentions COVID, before the start of COVID-19. I guess it, um, and, and we do, all of us here on the coast do live with the daily reality of the Cascadian, Cascadian earthquake threat. So, um, what, what would you suggest?
Well, I'm not exactly sure, but what Don and Terry just did with my last grappling at something, the fact that we live with it every day, it's kinda like the sea we swim in, we don't talk about it much. But man, a pandemic has shown us how, and it's been kind of a long, slow buildup to that, to that now exponential curve. And in a way, um, uh, an earthquake and tsunami would be the flip side of that. So there would be the shock of the immediate destruction, and then the longer recovery. But both of those situations, no matter how the curve goes, are overwhelming and outside of our control to some extent, and inside of our control to some extent. And how we wrestle with that tension of these things, that's, that's kinda what I'm looking to express in the language here. And I, I don't have suggested language, but I wonder if what we have- don't have suggested language, but I wonder if what we have is sufficiently, I don't know, says it clearly enough that we know that we're wrestling with those potentials.
Well, I think, yeah, and that was my comments when we first opened the, the meeting, is that we are, we are swimming in the middle of this pandemic, and it, it has influenced everything that, that we're doing this year. But I think that the, the main points that they have, the demographic and social, technological, economic, environmental, and political, all of those things are affected by any of those, the pandemic or the Cascadian earthquake, all of those are. So, I guess maybe, and then on the, on, in the middle of that paragraph, it says, this document is a full, and it mentions COVID again. I don't know, maybe, maybe we can have something in the, at some point, a paragraph that we can fit in either into the executive summary or something, just, just the, the, the reality of working through this, because COVID is, is still going to be with the new board. And, and also that we, part of our job on the coast is to be prepared for the Cascadian earthquake, or, you know, we barely missed a catastrophic fire on our, in our county this year. So, I, I don't know, I, I'm not, I'm not sure how to put it in here other than just to make a statement about the realities of living. County Manager Boone, did you have a comment?
Well, I just, I was just thinking that one option is that we have those five bullets that are on page 21 and 22 that Commissioner Sullivan mentioned previously. We could add one more bullet there that just talks about kind of the uncertainties that confront us as a general purpose government of things we don't control. And certainly COVID is one of those. And certainly, an earthquake would be, and a tsunami would be, and a wildfire would be. So, I think that there's something we can do there that would just draw that out a little bit more, if that makes sense to the board.
It does to me. Commissioner Nebiker, your hand is up?
Yes, I, I could also see it going under economic, where it says fluctuations, something about natural disasters. A pandemic is a natural disaster, as is Cascadia. Just, just a suggestion.
And I, go ahead Terry, go ahead.
Along those lines, following up on what, what just got said, let's, what if we left the five categories? And then, at the end, we do, and we add a paragraph, just like the one that's there right now, where it says, relevant to all five categories are the distribution of impacts. And there's a couple sentences about why you have to pay attention to distribution. What if there were another paragraph there which is relevant to all five categories, for the reasons that you've already started discussing, are the uncertainties about some of these events and our inability to control ones that are both natural and social, but beyond our purview, you know, the, the state of the economy, for example. That would be a relatively easy fix that I think would address what you're talking about.
That, that would work for me. I, I think, what strikes me right now is, when I saw Pat Cochran's report in our, in my, in my community after the, the earthquake in Japan, and he was talking about the culture of earthquake awareness that happens in countries that have experienced a lot of earthquakes. And I think that our, our country dealing with this pandemic for the first time in 100 years, this, this level of pandemic, it's kind of woken us up to the reality of, of that kind of uncertainty. And, but at the same time, it's built in the awareness that we will carry with us going forward. So, perhaps a paragraph like that would be, just to acknowledge that, that we're, we're learning as we go, and, and, and we need to continue to pay attention to it. Okay, so, any other comments on that section? All right, I left my page, or the next section, excuse me, is county priorities and actions. This is on agreeing, agreeing on priorities and actions to address priorities. And that would start on page 24. And again, the five focus areas are governance, infrastructure, economic development, environmental quality, and social services. Right? Does, if anybody doesn't have comments, maybe we can, we can go down by subject areas. Let's, let's start at the bottom first here, and go backwards, just for something different.
Chair Sullivan?
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Just one thing before you start that, to see if I can get nods of agreement. We've gone through three chapters now. I would say there's some agreement that chapter one, we need some solution to make it a little shorter. It's four pages long, and that's too long an introduction. But chapters two and three are pretty short, two and three pages each. And it's pretty hard to cut, you know, what we would cut down would be, even if we cut 10%, there's still going to be two or three pages each. So, I'm feeling like, one, we got to do something with, two and three, we got to pass on, except for some language changes. And four, we're not going to see the same problem again, where there's a lot of, there's a lot of calisthenics at the beginning of this, as we try to get warmed up to what the actual actions are. And, you know, again, I suspect that you're going to have some comments about that, so.
Terry, are you asking for the commissioners to agree with where we've gone so far?
Well, I, yeah, I get, I saw a few nods. If, if that seems about right, then, then I know where we are, and I can, I've done my, that part of the summary a little bit early, but that, it, it seems to me that's on track. I, I know what needs to be done so far. That's, so I'm just telling you that. And if you think I got...
Okay, I thank you. I see an affirmation by Commissioner Thompson, Commissioner Quila, Commissioner Webb, and Commissioner Nebiker. How do you feel about the first three sections that we, you feel comfortable handing that back over to Terry to tweak a little bit? I see Commissioner Nebiker is nodding. I haven't had a response from Commissioner Webb yet.
Um, I guess my feeling is that I felt that going through the processes that were involved, um, was, was less helpful than the issues themselves. And I, I feel that if we, that, that if we're saying to our, our constituents, okay, so these are our priorities. I'm not sure that they care as much about how we got to them. I think the emphasis should be on, these are the important issues that we believe your county government has to address. And I would like the emphasis to be not on the process, but on those issues.
Thank you Commissioner Webb. County Manager Boone?
If I could just reinforce what Terry was also saying in response to Commissioner Webb, because I think that is an important point, because that's where the rubber hits the road always, is what we do. But I think that we can use the county website and put up, you know, a, a nice presentation of, of what, what the plan is, is really doing to direct our future actions, and talk a little bit about why those are the important issues, as, as really the real substance of the plan. And we can do that through the brochure also, which I think a brochure has to be part of this as well. And then there's the executive summary piece that kind of feeds those pieces. So, I think that there is a way we can do exactly that, is to really make the public facing portions of the plan much more focused on the actions and on accountability, storytelling. Because, you know, part of using the website is that, that's not static. We're going to say, here are the things that are important through the planning process, but then we will continually update it as we actually work through it. And as we have committees and staff, and just effort, we can use that vehicle as a constant reporting vehicle also. And so, so I think we can do all of, of those things. I think Terry's point has been, is just, the plan document just tells the, the entire story for those few people who will want to read The Odyssey. Not everybody wants to read The Odyssey. They'll go to the Cliff Notes version really quickly. And so, so I, I think we can do both. So, there's, there's not a one size fits all. We understand that there's different audiences, and we will partition this out in, in, in a way that, that, that really makes sense over the long haul.
Just one, one thing to add to that, that I didn't say before, but I have thought about it, and I think it's true. When you go, as you will, to the state agencies, federal agencies, and foundations for money, if you have a plan like this plan, which is not a bunch of pie in the sky, it doesn't look like it was just made up and thrown together, it looks like there was a hell of a process that was very thoughtful, that is a big advantage. Because the people reading that, now we're at, now this plan is written for that audience. So, I, you know, I just want to make sure that we don't miss that audience as well. So, just, you know, keep, that's why, that's why we've got multiple documents.
I think that's a good point Terry. And I also wanted to make the point that we, I, I feel like we are so fortunate to have you and Mike and, and the PSU team here helping us with this. We're just very fortunate at many levels to have had you guide us through this process. And I think by keeping a record of that in this plan, that is a letter to the future. If they want to go back, how in the heck did they do that? They can go back and look and say, oh, this is their process, this is how it worked. That, that wasn't just that, like, like you've been saying. But I, so I, I like, I like the, the idea that we, we can have the best of both worlds, or all three worlds, or how many other worlds you want to pull out of this document, because it's very complex. But I, I, I'm comfortable with it. And Commissioner Webb's got a smile on her face, so I'm taking that she, at this point, is okay with the three, the three sections so far? Is that, is that, can you give me a nod? Commissioner Webb? Or no?
I'm, I'm just, I guess I'm, I guess I'm just concerned that, um, I guess I'm, yeah, I'm just concerned that nobody will, will read a document in this form. It, it's just, it's very, I don't know, but there aren't enough graphics in it, there aren't, there, you know, you can often do a chart that takes care of two or three paragraphs of narrative. And...
But I think, Commissioner Webb, I'm sorry, I know I'm talking over you, but my understanding of what I heard with the introduction of this meeting was that this is one form, and there are several other forms yet to come that have not yet been written. Is that correct, Terry?
Yes, yes, that's correct.
I understand that, but I also think that this document is the centerpiece. And I don't want it to be a turnoff for people. I, I don't want it to be, um, I, I, you know, I just don't want it to be a turnoff.
Okay, thank you. Terry?
Well, I, Commissioner Webb, you say it is the centerpiece. I mean, I think that is, that's a decision for you folks. If, if Don is saying, we definitely have to do the short version, the way that you could adopt this plan is to say, this is the, you know, we're adopting this language, this is the background technical document. But the document that we want to get out to public is the summary version. You've got all the content, now get it down to, get it down to four pages, get graphics in it, get some other stuff, and make this thing sing. And, you know, that's, I, I think that's where we're headed. And then at that point, you don't really come out with, when, when you come out with a plan, this, this plan document is not the centerpiece. It sits a little bit behind this four pager that comes out. I mean, those, those are options.
How does that, how does that seem, Commissioner Webb?
Um, I, I would still want this particular document to be very strong. I would like it to be, I, I just think that, that the, the, all the background stuff that is irrelevant to, to this whole effort, is, I, I just think it should all be done away with. But I, I don't know. I, I'm obviously the Lone Ranger here, so I don't want to obstruct the, the process.
Commissioner Webb, I, I apologize. I, I, I am a strong believer in, in good editing. I, I think that's a, that's a huge part of any published work. And I've said in classes where the teacher says, you can love what you write for 24 hours, and then you got to get it out and, and, and start editing it. So, I think it's important to have the details of the process. I am, you know, I, I'm a more, my, my, my favorite writers are like Hemingway and Ray Carver, who are very succinct in their writing. And so, that tends to be the, the kind of style that I prefer. So, I don't, I don't know, as, as we look towards this, if there is more editing that can be done, to, is that, is that kind of what you're saying, isn't it Commissioner Webb? And, and are you comfortable with that Terry?
If you could see my edited copy, you, you would understand the extent to which I agree with that. So, yeah.
So, what I might offer, Board, is that, is that, I think that, as, as, as I've heard, you know, Terry say, and I've heard the board discuss, I think there are things we can do to, to, to edit this document further. What I would say is, is if we can, I've been taking notes, I know Terry has, and then Commissioner Webb, if you have some other specific, you know, comments that you really want us to also consider as we review this document further, we'll come up with another version based upon all these changes that we've discussed today, and just see how much further down the road we are. And then we can have that next calibration discussion after that, if that makes sense.
That makes, that makes great sense to me.
So, going to support that, I'll make this very brief. What I think that would mean, and what I think we can do, is that chapter one, every, most of the stuff about process gets taken out. Some of it remains, just because there has to be something to say that there was a process. And maybe that's, that is two pages now, it's less than half a page. That process stuff, and a lot of the stuff that you're going to be talking about now in chapter four, which is also kind of the end of the process, how did we make these decisions, et cetera, that could all go into a new appendix, that is an appendix to chapter one about what's this plan all about. And, and then, and then we're, we're done with it. Now, we've, I, I think we can shorten the plan by, you know, on the order of four pages. And, and I don't, I, I don't think there's a lot to do to chapters two and three. We've got less than a page setting up vision, mission, values, and the rest is text that you guys have created. And same with chapter, chapter three, I mean, it can be cut down a little bit. But if you're okay with that, that's what I interpret Don to be saying, we'll work on it. That's what you can expect. And then in addition, when we get that done, I think we're still planning on... we get that done, I think we're still planning on putting, doing some graphic work on this that would include some pictures and, you know, maybe the abstracts go in and other things like that to make this document a little bit more engaging. But the real engagement piece is that next document, the four-page booklet.
Okay, thank you, Terry. So any other comments about this section? We have, it is 112 on my computer. So we are slated to take this meeting until 2:00 if need be, but let's keep that in mind. And county priorities and actions, agreeing to priorities. And as I said, governance, infrastructure, economic development, environmental quality and social services. And this, that takes us over to 25, and this, this goes on for some time. So why don't we, would anyone like to, to start out with comments on this section? Commissioner Nebiker?
Yeah, maybe I'll, I'll wait till the county manager comes back. Because he and I had a conversation earlier. So, oh, there he is. Okay, so Don and I had a conversation earlier today about this. And he assured me, we're, I'm talking about economic development. And I understand that in that committee that Commissioner Quila was with, that there were, there was talk about supporting the arts. But I don't see anywhere in this document that this is mentioned. Maybe I have missed it. This is my concern. Let's see if I can say this as the, the commission chair likes, somewhat succinctly. So when, when government entities partner with any kind of, well, the arts, whether it's the state, the nation, a countries, other countries, they always grow and do better, even if it isn't a large financial part of support. But it enables those, especially nonprofits, to get grants. So, and as we know, just a few years ago with that economic, arts and economic prosperity study grant, we had 13 million showing coming into the county in nonprofit sector. So that would go to about $39 to $65 million coming into the county, if you take that with the for-profit. I don't think that it is wise, in my opinion, to not mention this because, and I realize it, some people don't like it because it brings tourists. But those tourists who are interested in the arts generally are not here to, you know, be rowdy and cause trouble. And it's a pretty clean industry. And we do rely on tourism for our economy. It's part of our economy. And I would just like to see it mentioned somewhere in the document, how this is vital, so that it can be used for organizations. And the county manager assured me that it is going to be there somewhere in the background, but I don't see it in any of this. And I would really like to see it somewhere in, under the econ- economic development portion.
Thank you, Commissioner Nebiker. I see Commissioner Quila's, we haven't spoken about it, you handed it up again?
Yeah, just, I'll just address it because I did bring this up and we did have a discussion about it. And it was Kevin Leahy, I think, and others that had been very involved in the arts grant and securing funding for, for that. And, and everybody was very supportive of, of, there wasn't any discussion about the negative aspects, tourism, any of that within discussion. It's just, we had a number of items and by priority of the group, the ones that we selected are the ones that we selected. And certainly didn't mean that we wouldn't support the arts or didn't feel like we needed to be mentioned in some case. It just was the, it was the group's decision on, on the priorities. And, and that's how they came by it.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I, I just want it to be, I, I have to voice this because, well, this is what I know about. It can easily go away. It can easily slide back away. And the arts, until we had the pandemic, the arts in our county has grown, I know it has, since the county formed the Arts Council. And what you, we had, what we've had because of the Arts Council is all the communities in the county coming together. Prior to that, they were all fighting. They were all fighting for a small piece of the pie, and they weren't cooperating. With the Arts Council, you have them cooperating. And I would, I, if it can just be mentioned somewhere in here, I think it will be a greater assurance that it will be preserved. I understand that our present board and our county manager is supportive of it, but I would like it to be in a document somehow, in some way.
Um, I, I support that. I had, had kind of a 40,000-foot view of the fact that one of the things that I think is missing in, in the whole document are quality of life issues. And there are things that we did, I don't know, they're, they're almost, they're almost value statements. But to me, in all the years I spent doing economic development, the biggest thing I learned was that people locate their businesses and their homes in places with a high quality of life, if they can afford it. And there's just about nothing else that, that is as strong a determinant of, of economic decisions. I mean, I could tell you a story about being in Pueblo, Colorado, when I worked for the Economic Development Administration and was asked to spend an extra couple of days because there was a guy coming in from New York with his wife, who wanted to look at a locating, relocating his factory to a, to an industrial park, which my organization had, had given them the grant to build. And we, we, we went out there and we met their private plane and they walked off. The airport was right near the industrial park. We put them in a van and took them in and yada, yada. And on the way back to the airport, the wife turned to the husband and said, honey, there is no way I could live in this desert place. And we were offering him an economic package that was really compelling. But without even taking a very, very close look at Pueblo, Colorado, the deal was, is why, yeah, I can't, I can't live here. This is it. I mean, those are economic determinants. And, and quality of life issues have been, have been long, long neglected in terms of sustainability of an economy. And I, I think that some statement somewhere about the importance of quality of life issues. I mean, one of the things that I have been very proud of this board is that we have, we have a, we really seem to have a good appreciation for our historical and cultural values that make this community so special. And so I think some kind, I, I just found that kind of missing. And I understand it perfectly because we were focusing, you know, but we haven't, we haven't had the, we, maybe we didn't have, maybe we should have started with, with, I don't know, with something more holistic. I, I, I don't know. But, but I found that that kind of overall thing, and we have certainly learned during COVID, how important so many of the things that happen in this community.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner, thank you, Commissioner Webb. And I, and I think the arts is, is part of that quality of life. We are now approaching one, it's a little, it's a little after, it's 122, but Commissioner, I mean, I'm sorry, County, County Manager Boone, you had some comments you wanted to add.
Well, if I could just refer the Board to the vision statement, I just want to reinforce that early on, quality of life was an important feature. And I know that as we started doing the actual issue teams, it may have gotten a little bit more dispersed. But in the mission statement, that's one of, one of the fundamental features was quality of life, including economic prosperity, ecosystem integrity, health, safety and social connection. And so I just wanted to just reinforce that that's been part of what's been driving this and certainly drives county governments everywhere, is the quality of life. I did want to speak to Commissioner Nebiker's comment as, as well, and reinforce what Commissioner Quila said, that the committee did talk and was very so, so supportive of, of the arts. Right now, it's identified as one of the Tier Three. And some of these, some of these get lost with just this table because there's so much information and it's such in small print, as Commissioner Thompson would remind me. But under Tier Three, right, right, right now, I think it's ED3E. It's continued so, so support of, of Clatsop County Arts Commission. I think that we might want to look at the definition of, of a Tier Three, because right now it says actions of merit but lower priority. They're really actions of merit, but they don't take as much staff and board time. And so it's not that they're not, that they're a lower priority. It's just that they're not going to consume as much time as some of these other things that are Tier One. And so what we might want to do is look at that definition of Tier Three, take out lower priority, and just say that it's, these are, these are important, but they're not going to take as much staff and board time, if that makes sense.
I think, I think that would be helpful. Yes. Thank you.
Do we, do we have consensus from the commissioners on that part, that we reword that in such a way that we, that it is clear that those Tier Three are important? It's just that it's less staff time? And are you comfortable with Don and Terry rewording that? I see, I see nods. Commissioner Quila, are you comfortable with that? Okay.
Yes.
Commissioner Nebiker? Okay, thank you. Commissioner Webb, Nebiker? Is that okay? All right. Thank you very much. So is that clear, Terry and Don, what we need to do on that one?
Yeah, it's, it's clear, it's clear what you want. It's not going to be as simple as you imply. So, you know, it, when it's, we have stuff in there of adopt, of evaluate economic opportunities for Juul and Westport, countywide salmon recovery plan. You know, those are not simple items that we can do with limited staff time. Those are there because they cannot be done with everything else. Now that, now Don's example of the arts may be able to be done in a more limited way, but it's not, it's not the clean cut that you're implying.
Well, I can draft something up that I think will provide clarity for all of it.
Great. Okay, then Don and I can work on it. I'm, I'm on.
Yeah. And, and my concern is just to get it in the document somehow, that it is something that we value, so that going forward, it can be used for grants. I, I don't know. Maybe there's somewhere else in, in county documents where we say that we value arts and culture so that these agencies can, can use that. I mean, I just want to see this sector be able to grow and bring more economic prosperity to the county.
Well, $13 million is, is pretty significant, so.
That's only, that's only in the nonprofit.
Yes. Thank you, Commissioner Nebiker. I appreciate you bringing that up. And, and Terry, I appreciate you reminding us that, that it's not simple. So we will, we will leave it to you and the county manager to finesse that a little bit. Moving, we have, it is almost 1:30. And any other comments on this Section Four, which I imagine there might be, which again is talking about the topic areas? We could go with agreement. For me, I, I, I like how the, the governance is, is done. I'm, I'm comfortable with that. Any other comments? I, one thing that I, that I, that I wonder about, when we get into the nitty gritty and they've got the, the G and the I and the 1A and the blah, 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 blah. Perhaps when you look at that for, you know, the graphic part of it, is there a way we can, either with colors or something, that distinguishes those different topic areas, rather than simply that, the, you know, the letters and the numbers? What do you think, Terry? How do you do that in other plans when you have this kind of complexity?
If you take a look at what, on the screen share, here's the, here's the ISACWAL Plan. You can see what they've done is they've got, they got, you know, values, you know, value statements in here. And then they put the focus areas around the outside, right?
Okay.
And, and within, and then within that, when they get back to, let me see if I can do this just a sec. You know, here's mobility, mobility's in blue, growth and development is in orange. So I think that's the kind of thing you're talking about. There are graphic techniques for making this piece a little bit more clear. We just haven't got to that point yet.
Okay. I, I think it's just because I'm more of a visual learner. So, yeah, I think that's, I, I like that. Thank you. Any other comments?
I am happy with what is written here under social services. This was my focus group. And I think it's, it's very good.
Thank you. Commissioner Thompson, how do you feel about your focus group? Any, any comments?
No, I'm, I'm, I'm well content, well pleased. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Quila, do, do you have any comments about your focus area?
No, no, I think it's good. And I appreciate the effort of everybody that was involved in it. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Quila. Commissioner Webb, do you have any comments about your focus area?
Yeah, I, um, did a little, I did a little bit of tiny tweaking, but other than that, I thought the message got, got out.
Okay. Is there any of that tweaking that you'd like to pass on to County Manager or to Terry? Okay. Is there any of that tweaking that you'd like to pass on to County Manager or to Terry?
No, I have, I, I will pass on the whole package of, of my tweaks. I don't want to take time here to do that.
Okay. So it looks like Terry, that we have, um, each of the commissioners, myself included, are, are comfortable with, uh, with their, with their topic areas. Um, is there something else you need from us for this section?
One thing, the, uh, uh, based on, you know, the, the earlier comments, the, this, this section has two parts. This was always going to be the biggest chapter because this is where the action is. But it's got the part that's called the focus area and then getting to the actions. There's four pages on the focus areas. That, uh, you know, I, I think it tells a lot about the process and how things got sifted out. But in the context of what got said by commissioners earlier, is that stuff that you want me to cut down and take some of that process out and put it in this? What it's going to likely be a new process appendix as opposed to in the plan itself? Or, uh, you didn't comment on that or it, does it, is it okay the way it is?
I'm sorry, Terry, I don't understand, I don't understand what you're asking.
Okay. If you go to, um, the, the, the first page of chapter four, agreeing on priorities. It then, that's followed by four pages of text with, which ends with the punchline, which is, so after we did all this stuff, we finally got down to exhibit 4.2, which is here's our tier one, tier two and tier three. We could cut that down to a page and say, we went through a process that included X, Y and Z. And in the end, we put it into three tiers and here they are. And now we're down to one page instead of four pages. But we lose whatever information about how those considerations got made. I wouldn't throw it out. I'd move that into an appendix that would describe how we made those decisions.
And if I may, that's why I raised my hand. I think, um, this is the one place where people want to know how we chose what we chose. So with all the rest of it, I, I fully support a process appendix. With this particular item, I, I tend more toward, yeah, people want to understand how we did it and didn't just pull it out of our ear.
So I, I agree with that.
Okay.
Okay. Okay.
Any other comments? I'm sorry, go ahead, Terry.
Well, I mean, if, if that's it for chapter four, and you can, there might be more, then chapter five is just the appendices and um, you've, I, I showed you that before, uh, Don's been through that. So I think the only thing we're saying is we're probably going to add a new appendix on process that will strip out some stuff out of mainly chapter one and maybe some other places. And then cross-reference it and that'll trim down the document a little bit. So i- if that's true, then it, it, I mean, I'll turn it back to, to the commissioners, but uh, we've been through it from one through five. I've got my notes. Uh, Don, I think I know what I have. Don and I need to talk, but then I think it's pretty clear what we have to do. And, and then the, the next topic would then be under the process of, well, so what happens next? But I'll, I'll stop there and see if anybody else wants to talk about the document itself.
Okay. I see no hands.
All right.
So we will, will into, uh, number five. Terry, do you want to take that away?
Uh, you mean chapter five? Or, or?
Yes. Sorry, chapter four.
Uh, you know, I don't have anything more on chapter five. Um, what, what I'm saying is, um, I'm going to do what it already, what's in the plan on chapter five. We've already got those appendices, uh, posted, not for public consumption yet, but we're, we're getting them posted up. And, uh, and that's what we got. So, uh, and I like, I, I like the organization of it because it ties to the chapters and the chapters tied to the structure of the plan. And so anybody says, well, I want to know about the process. I want to know about vision, mission, value, situation, focus. It's all pretty logical. So I think it works well.
Well, thank you, Terry. I just wanted to express, um, I was so excited when we, we were going to start this strategic plan this year. I was so really charged up about it and I really had hope. And I understand that we're not able to do that, but I really had hoped that we would be able to approve this, uh, with this board and hand it off to the next board. And I can see, to me, it seems that there's just so much more work yet to be done that, that it does have to be, um, extended, uh, without our final approval. Is that your understanding, Terry?
Well, let me, let me, I think, can I use that as a segue into this, uh, in, into the next slide then?
Yes.
Okay. So here, here's what we think the next steps are, review amendment and approval. Whoops, excuse me. Sorry. Um, so, uh, here we are today, review, discussion of draft plan directions for final. I think we've got that done. So in December, we're making these final edits. You, um, you commissioners, certainly Commissioner Webb and anybody else who wants to can send us, um, text edits in whatever form makes sense to you. If that's, uh, track changes in Word or handwritten notes, I, I don't care. We'll work with them. And, um, and then we'll do final formatting on this final, on this Word document. And we'll also write the summaries, those, that summary that goes into the, the plan document. And the summary that's going to be this more flashy four pager. Then in January, that package would be something for you to adopt. And, um, that schedule is, I think, to be determined. Teresa's looking at that, but I'm not up on exactly your process, but there's an adoption process. And at that point, ideally you would adopt the plan, this document we're talking about, and also the summary of the plan, the summary document. Whether we can have that summary document ready to go in January is an open question that Don and I haven't talked about. Um, because it requires somebody with some, uh, graphic experience to, uh, help with that. And it requires getting it done over the holidays. Getting it written is not a problem. It's getting it all formatted that's a problem. Uh, so Don and I will talk about that. You could adopt the plan and say, this is kind of the base level document and the, you know, the, the public version of it, uh, public abbreviated version soon to follow. Um, and then in February, the, the way, way we have set this up, I've talked to you about it since Mike Leeson's first, and my first presentation back in January, February, was that to make a strategic plan work, it's got to get incorporated into a, uh, into a commission work plan. And that commission work plan then has to be acknowledged in the budget process. So that there's, that staff knows that, um, that they've got obligations to comply with the, to, to help the commission on this and that they've got funding to do it. So that is, um, that's kind of the, the, the end of, of this process. Then you're, that would close down what I'll call the strategic plan and work plan. And at that point, you're then working on the, the focus area actions themselves. And, um, I think I wrote somewhere, now I can't remember. I, I, I think, I think it's in chapter four, uh, but, uh, if not, I'll just say it. And that is that it's going to take a little, it's going to take a little while to get launched. You have, uh, you have actions that you say you want to take, but you don't have a work plan. And in some cases, it's going to be absolutely necessary. Okay. This is the action we want to do. How are we going to do that? You know, what staff are going to work on it? What kind of funding? What's the product going to be, et cetera? So I would imagine that there, that the, you know, your, uh, uh, March, April, May, there's going to be a lot of work on getting organized before you then start digging into the specific issues. Not that you can't make some progress on those, but some of them will need a work plan. So that's, that's processes I see it.
No, I think that's pretty clear, Terry. I, I was just referring to the fact that, um, that Commissioner Nebiker and I, myself will not, uh, be going forward with the new board. So, um, I just, uh, if it hadn't been for COVID, I think that we would have, uh, this, this commission would have been able to approve the initial plan and hand it to the new board and have them start working out the, um, adopting the plan. Um, so I'm just expressing my regret, uh, that I will no longer, uh, be here to, to work on this. But I, I'm proud of the work that we've done and, and I, and I, and I'm really happy that the county is going in this direction. I think it's important and I appreciate all your work, Terry. Okay. Any other comments?
Yeah, I have a, I have a question. Um, and it's, I guess it's in line with what our, our chair, uh, just said. Um, we are asking a new board, um, to basically completely endorse what this board has produced. Um, is that likely? Is that something that we can be assured of? Because the new board might, might, I mean, if they're the ones who are voting on this plan, then, um, uh, the new board might certainly want to, um, want to take another look at it. Because they have no ownership in it.
Well, they, there was some, uh, Commissioner Alex that did participate, uh, in the process.
Well, I wouldn't call that participation if they are listening to our deliberations. Because they haven't had a vote in this matter.
I can speak to the, okay.
Go ahead, Commissioner Quayle.
Well, I could just speak to the count, to the economic development piece. So both, uh, Courtney Bangs and, uh, John Toyoka, uh, both participated and helped formulate the economic development, uh, focus group and, and plan moving forward.
And Courtney Bangs worked on the childcare, um, segment as well for the very, the very purpose you mentioned. Because, uh, since we knew that there was a timeframe and since we knew that this new board would be implementing, that was the reason to reach out and involve people. So that they did participate, they did help form the product and they would be thus more likely to support it.
And I'm sorry, I didn't realize that that was an option. I certainly would have done that if I had known that was an option.
County Manager?
I was just going to say, and, um, as I think I've written in, in some of my Friday updates, um, staff has been meeting with the Commissioner Alex regularly also and keeping them abreast of, of, of various projects, but one of them is also the strategic planning process. And so I think that we've done a lot of good work to, to really make this kind of an institutional process. And I think a lot of the underpinnings we've worked so diligently on are going to carry forward into the next year. I think that what makes this, the process really that I see in, in, in kind of a legacy term is that this is an annual process. So we're going to be going through this and saying, how do we manage our relevance to the services and the needs of the community on, on a regular basis and then report back. And so, you know, I, I think that every board, whether it's a new board or whether it's a well-established board, there's going to be a culture here that will be strong enough and will be clear enough that, that the legacy will just continue. And so that doesn't mean that there aren't sometimes tweaks in priorities, but that the underpinnings are there. And so, you know, just based upon my experience, I feel really confident that the work you have, have done, which is really foundational, will carry forward and have impacts for years and years to come.
And County Manager Boone, I, I really appreciate you, the expertise that you brought to this county. And one of them was that to, to, first of all, to have the relationships to bring PSU to us for us to, to formulate this strategic plan. And, and I, I, it's like it's given words to something that I, I felt we needed since my, beginning of my term. Um, and so I'm really happy that we have, um, developed this and that it, that it will be an annual process and, and will become part of the governance culture in Clatsop County. Because I, I think it's so important to check in with where we're at, where we want to go and how we're going to get there. Um, and that's what this strategic plan does. And so I, I really appreciate all the effort that's put, put into this.
Well, and if, if I could just say really quickly too, I mean, I, you know, part of developing these is, is really, it, it's the esprit de corps and the relationships and the ability to, to really do what we talked about earlier, which is navigate differences, whether it's perspectives, um, you know, experiences. And so I, I really believe that us getting this done in the way we did, and during a pandemic nonetheless, says volumes about the leadership of the county. A lot of counties couldn't have gotten this done, um, during this period. And so my hats truly go off to the board, um, for really leading us, us through this. And there's going to be a lot of things that are going to be part, part of this annual governance process that we haven't really even talked about yet because we haven't got there yet. But we do plan on doing an annual citizen survey. You know, we'll be using other, other avenues to touch base with the public on a regular basis and report back out. So, I mean, this is really more of a transformational governance process, uh, as Commissioner Sullivan noted. And so, um, and I think that's the exciting part of it is you have to start somewhere and we have that start. So.
Well said. Thank you. Any, any other comments? Uh, Terry, did you want to, uh, make some final comments to the board at this time? To this particular board, I should say. You'll be working with other people.
Well, when you, when you say it that way, I, I can't, I can't say no. I mean, um, I, I, uh, I, I am, I'm pretty, I'm pretty happy with, with the plan. I mean, with the plan that we're going to have out there with, and with, with the way this has come together. And, um, I agree, it was a, a difficult time to get it done. Uh, we were behind you guys. Uh, I mean, Don and, and the commissioners and the people that you brought into your, uh, focus area groups. That was a key part of the process, getting that done. And that's where all the really hard work got done. After that, and for me, once that got done, the rest of it was, was mainly just doing, you know, workman-like work on assembling it together, but the, the hard part was over. So, uh, I, I, you know, there's, as you go forward, there's going to be, you know, what you're going to find is the strategic plan is a starting point. And as you start digging into these actions, there are going to be all kinds of problems that are going to come up. But, uh, if, with the document that you've got, if, I, I think what you have done for your citizens is displayed your commitment as elected officials to make decisions for the collective, which is what you've been asked to do by being elected in. And, uh, that you're going to do that in an open and transparent way and you're going to listen to people. And you're going to make some tough choices and not everything can be done. And, you know, that's, that's the best anybody can hope for. So I think, yeah, yeah, uh, it's my hope that you will, by doing that, there will be just this, you know, little by little, a change in how people think about government. Instead of, um, I know I don't want any government or government's inefficient or government doesn't do anything for me. There will be instead, oh, okay, I can see how government works and I can see where my part of the process is. And I can see how I can be engaged if I care to be. And I think once you get there, um, everything's going to be, it's still going to be difficult, but it's going to be a whole lot less, um, uh, you know, a whole lot more understandable for everybody on the difficulties of their roles. And I think a lot more pleasurable. As, uh, Mike Leeson said, you know, why would, you know, when he was trying to get people to run for government, he said, well, you know, what was I going to tell people? They were going to get, they were going to get elected to office. It was going to take all of their free time and people were going to hate them for it. How do you get them to sign up? and people were going to hate him for it. How do you get him to sign up for that? And his answer, his answer was, it will stretch your soul. So hope it does it.
You know, I think that's true. And I think this past while, I, I just, I just so believe in this experiment we call our, our democracy and that we have such a proud history of, of continuing forward. And, and I think one of the vital steps to continuing our former government is to invite the public in and to invite the public to become involved and to, for all of us to understand that this government is of the people for the people. And I, and I, I know that sounds corny, but it just, it just is so important. And, and so with that, I'll, I'll stop. Anyone else have any comments before we end up the meeting today? Commissioner Nebiker?
I have a question. So is this, is this the last time that this board will meet on the strategic planning process?
Right now, based upon the, the schedule, Commissioner Nebiker, the board schedule and the holidays, I, I think this will be the last meeting that we have on the strategic plan. But we will share with you documents going further out. I mean, so we will continually share as we go through this. And, because there'll be work done this month. So.
Okay. Thank you. And thank you to my fellow commissioners and to the staff for all the good work and to Terry and your team. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Commissioner Quila?
Well, I would just say I, I appreciate everybody's work on this. It's been a, I mean, this is overwhelming project that we undertook and I'm glad that we were able to, to find common ground and to get something in place under the circumstances is pretty impressive, I think. So, no, I enjoyed working on it. Thanks to everybody.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Well, let's go enjoy some of the sunshine we have shining down upon us right now on this first day of December, 2020. So thank you very much and we will see each other next week. All right. Bye-bye. Meeting adjourned.